Can I call this committee in order, please? And I would like to invite Pastor Guy Weathers to the New Creek Baptist Church for his invitation, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to in spray. While we thank you for each of these servants that you provided our city, we ask for their protection for the families, for the prosperity of spirit and mind and body and peace and wisdom that can come from you, or that you'd increase their passion for justice and righteousness, give them purity of thought, the agenda for the good of all the citizens of our community. They would seek the good for the city in all that they do and the decisions that they make. They'd be men and women of morality and integrity and strength of character. They would promote peace and tranquility in our community. They would establish an environment that helps the church to continue to flourish. And I declare over the city of Mineral Wells that it belongs to you. We declare your promise that your cities will overflow with prosperity. We declare that the city of Mineral Wells is filled with men and women and children who know and understand and realize that you alone are God and the sovereign ruler of the universe. And we call forth this city's loyalty to you and our obedient service to you. Again, we thank you for these city councilmen or mayors and those who serve our city. We ask for your blessing in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please draw again the pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, a pledge of allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Do you have any, uh, one else wanting to address?
That's all we have, yes.
Okay, would you have someone sign up to speak, uh, to the end call?
Changer.
State your name, your address, and, uh, the topic is in award recognition.
My name is Dusty Bethel. I'm with Mineral Wells Fire Department. I do all my druthers, but I don't do it in Mineral Wells. We wanted to take a few minutes before y'all got going to recognize a few individuals very briefly. On behalf of the Mineral Wells Professional Firefighters Association, I'd like to present a plaque to Chief Poole and Chief Sullivan. It says, "While only a small token of our appreciation, may they help raise recognition and awareness for the work done by these men to better our emergency services provided to the citizens of Mineral Wells. Your countless hours put in over the last year to not only improve our capabilities and the standards we adhere to, but to the morale and the well-being of the members of the place and fire departments. Thank you for your service and everything that you've done for us over the course of the last year." And it was, it was pretty tough pulling one over on Chief Poole when he saw all of it.
Geez.
Uh, we have, we have one more that we wanted to recognize, and I'm not sure if he's right here. He's here with his little boys. Assistant Chief Dunn has done a tremendous amount of work since taking over as assistant chief. He's done a lot for us on the EMS side, uh, as far as the new purchase of the amulets and the design of that, and the membership wanted to recognize you, Brian.
Thank you. You have the cards. Okay, item number one, consent. Consent, if you need to agree. The vote section to permit the consent of all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes seven, six, yes. Item number three on page five is conduct a public hearing and consider an ordinance to change zoning on lots one, two, three, and four in block thirty-one of the College Addition to the city of Mineral Wells, 1015 Southwest 12th Street from single-family residence to the HUD code manufacturer district. And I'll open the public hearing at six oh five.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, if you might indulge me for just a moment. Uh, I would take what our firefighters have said and extend that a little bit further and express the appreciation of all the staff for what this council has done, particularly in this last budget session, uh, because there were some difficult decisions made as far as improving compensation and working conditions, and that goes hand in glove with some of the recommendations that both Chief Poole and Chief Sullivan had made to the council. So we would like to certainly recognize the council and y'all's role in improving the working conditions and circumstances for all of our employees as well as our public safety employees. We'd like to at least make mention of that at this point as well. As far as the case at hand, this case was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission in its meeting on January the fourth. There was no opposition that was presented to the request at that time. If you look on page eleven, you'll see the actual location of this particular request, which is the entire half block on Southwest 12th Street from Southwest Ninth Avenue to Southwest Tenth Avenue. Following the public hearing that was conducted at the P and Z level, uh, the commission voted unanimously to recommend that this request be approved. You'll find an ordinance on page fourteen that would effectuate this particular request and bring the recommendation forward to you to see.
I just got a couple of questions. Would you refresh my, yeah, I've talked to the people out there, and could you tell me what it, when you say they're gonna be putting in new manufactured homes, what is she talking about?
Well, Ms. Brown is with us this evening. If she would like for her to address the council, but, uh, but I believe what she'd indicated at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing was she'd like to put new manufactured homes there on, on the lots, uh, beginning with the easterly portion of property. I'll certainly let you speak your.
Thank you. They would not be branded, but they will not be old and ugly. And there's a, there's a home on the property right now that has been condemned and is scheduled for demolition, I believe in October, November.
By you?
Yes.
Talk.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for this ordinance?
I just have a que, is that, does that mean that, are you changing the zoning from manufactured homes within the city limits, or is it just that area?
No, it is for these four lots.
One block.
These four specific lots.
Is there anybody that would like to speak against this? And I will close the public hearing at six oh eight. What a pleasure to consult.
We've approved an ordinance, admitting the zoning ordinance of the city of Mineral Wells, Texas, by changing the zoning designation on lots one, two, three, and four in block thirty-one of the College Addition to the city of Mineral Wells, Powell, Mineral County, Texas, from single-family district to HUD code, sorry, HUD code manufacturing district.
I'll second.
Then move the statement to approve the ordinance. Ordinance, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes seven, zero. Item number four, page sixteen, is a receipt presentation for the Mineral Wells Industrial Foundation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and councilmember, just as an introduction, you will recall that during the budget process, uh, there was mention made that the council would like to have periodic updates, uh, on the activities of the Mineral Wells Industrial Foundation and the Area Growth Council. So this evening, we've asked both Steve Butcher and Richard Ball if they might be here and present to us what they're involved in presenting. In an effort to keep the council informed, I give each one of you a handout that tells you all about the Industrial Foundation, when it was formed in nineteen fifty-seven, and the things that we've tried to accomplish through the years. And then if any of you have any, I know you haven't had time for it, if you have any problems with that, or need to know anything, give me a call. And then the other part of it is, Mr. Butcher, don't come up and inform you, or we will do our best to inform you about the two prospects we're working on right now. As you know, we're limited as to how much we can talk about, but we will try to inform. So I hope you enjoy your reading, and I hope this helps you with the area foundation and what it does. And like I say, if you have any questions, give me a call. I'll turn it over to Steve now, let him kind of bring it up to date. Thank you.
Mayor, council, uh, I think maybe, let's wait a minute. Just very briefly, it's, it may be in there, I don't think, that's more like a history, just so everybody kind of remembers. The Industrial Foundation, which started back in nineteen fifty-seven, as Richard said, at that time, they just went locally. This is local mineral wells, nineteen fifty-seven, and they raised three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to bring a company in here. And that's primarily small donations, and I've got a list of them. Uh, that's awesome, when you think of what that is today, the dollars, and it's huge, and they really did a job. Anybody that gives a donation ever to the Industrial Foundation is then a member of the foundation. Now, our meetings are open to members or non-members, but if a donation's at least twenty-five dollars, you get a vote. Because we have a whole lot of there. So anyway, I wanted everybody to be aware of that. Now, concerning what's going on now, I might start with the Baker Hughes facility, is probably where it did sell. But it's sold to a group that I think are speculating, which is not a problem either way. But they are anticipating that at some point that probably will be worth a whole lot more than they have it paid for. This Industrial Foundation gave BJ Services three hundred thousand dollars in cash and forty-seven acres of land, which is about a half million dollars, when that facility was built in two thousand eight. So the foundation put in about three-quarters of the mill they were taking. City put in about three-quarters of a million in street, water, sewer, and that kind of stuff. So the community had an investment of about a million five in that. Now, I'll tell you that for two reasons. One, we tried very hard to get the facility built, and we got it done. But inasmuch as those were gifts, that doesn't go on their balance sheet, it cannot be appreciated, obviously. At the time that they closed that place, the book value of the property, what they had in it, excluding what we gave them, was over twenty million dollars. And it sold for a lot less. So it is an exceptional facility, and we are still trying to put somebody in it, and I'm sure that this gentleman, the right price, will sell it. So we're still looking, because it's a very unique facility, but it is a top-of-the-line facility. It's just amazing what they did out there. You don't expect that from a oil and gas company. But anyway, that happened. Then, of course, NOV closed. We just toured the NOV building about a week ago. It's not quite the same caliber as the Baker Hughes building was. It, uh, but it's, it's a facility, and as soon as they kind of get right on the price, hopefully we'll find somebody that could use it and we can put them in there. And that would be what we're trying to do. The, something that we've talked about in envision Mineral Wells, which is the planning thing that's going on, uh, what we did for fifteen years is I gave away property. Industrial Foundation had land, and I gave it away. In return, people built buildings, create jobs, and create a tax base. Or I don't have anything to give away. I kind of feel like, I don't know, I'm concerned. Anyway, we need a new industrial park. Uh, and so we are working to try to find the last park that was built, the one that Baker Hughes was in. The Industrial Foundation found funding for, through the Fed, and we were searching, trying to see, a lot of that has changed, but we're trying to find a way to get the money. Because you're talking two to three million dollars, by the time you buy the land, put in the streets, and you put in the water and sewer and everything, it's an expensive proposition. But that's what we really need. Going forward, we're going to need a way to attract companies to come to Mineral Wells. You remember, three years ago, we started talking to a company that was going to do ammunition here. They were going to manufacture ammunition. When they came to us, they indicated that, uh, they basically had their funding in place, and you know, what would we do for them? Well, we laid out a whole plan of what we would do. And one of the things was, we said we would do a tax abatement. Now, we haven't done a tax abatement in this town for thirty-five years, something like that, and that one only lasted a very short time. We've been trying to stay away from tax abatements. We want taxes, but this was, looked like it was going to be such a big deal that even the small piece of tax we would retain would be a truckload more than we were getting. So it looked like the right thing to do. We put together, we being the city, the county, the, uh, all the tax entities, a stack of paper about like this, in one month. Everybody voted on it. We made that happen overnight. That's never been done. And we thought this thing was a go. Well, then, they kind of disappeared, quit answering calls, which is always scary. And we decided, well, obviously, they didn't have their financing together. What has happened is they have reconstituted, they have one of the original people involved, they've changed their name, uh, and they came back and started talking to us about six, six months ago. And we've had a number of presentations from them, we've had meetings with them, and I guess the bottom line is, and I think you all got a memo on this, Lance put the memo out, the last thing they came to us with just didn't seem reasonable for, for a startup company that's never manufactured a bullet in its life to ask us to give them a very large sum of money, almost the size of the city's budget for a year, and literally give them. They wanted it to be a grant, and they didn't want to give us any collateral. So Lance and I had a, a conference call with them, and I, and we told them that. We said, we don't see how, we said, we don't, wouldn't be comfortable taking this to the council. Now, this is something that had to go on for a vote and everything, because they wanted a general obligation bond. We said, now, if, if there's some way we could have as collateral the new facility, maybe, maybe we could talk to the council about that. No, they wanted to retain the building for their shareholders. So we said, well, you think that's going to be very hard to do? And they said, well, we'll get back to you right after Christmas. Crickets? I haven't heard anything. We don't know, they could still come back, and it did last time, so we'll see. However, in the interim, another ammunition manufacturer has come to our attention, and we are working with them right now on the same property, and it's certainly not a done deal. It's, uh, everything's done except for financing. That's always the problem. But these guys have been in business, they do make bullets, they have a very good name in the industry, they did two and a half million dollars or so last year. So they're not huge, but they're real, and we are working with them. Now, I know one of the things that you tend to wonder various times, well, what is it we do, and how do we try to get companies in here, and what do we tell them? I have copies of the proposal. What I do is I put proposals together. However, I send them out digitally. If they want to print it, they can print it. But I printed up some copies of this last proposal, which is the current deal we're working on. And I would like to pass them out, but I would like to first request and see if you're comfortable. There's a section in there that has to do with financial and, and the company name, those two things, which sounds kind of strange, but they've been through a bad situation with another community, and they're gun-shotted. I would like to know if you would agree to, and these are yours to take and look at, but I don't want them spread around either verbally or online or anywhere else until we announce. Is that helpful?
Oh, I have no problem. I don't have, I don't, I don't even need it.
I'd rather not. I'd like everything that comes as a record.
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
Okay, you have, that's the size of it. It's not a hundred pages.
Appreciate your openness and your willingness to do that, but I don't think that's a good business decision to make.
Well, it's, it's chancy right now, but I wanted everybody to be aware, we're working on this very hard. We've laid out, I found a very good plan for, you know, we're not in a situation where we can say, well, we're going to give you seven million dollars upfront, or five million, two million, or one million, for that matter. But what we do is we put together a package that over a period of time, they get benefits that have current value to them, and that's what we're doing. And we help them structure the deals, and that's also what we're doing. So, um, I'm excited about it, but then I was excited about the last one, until they quit talking to me, so I don't know. That's a thumbnail, if anybody has a.
I got several questions. First of all, I really appreciate you coming and giving us a presentation like I've always wanted, so the community's open to know what you're doing. And again, you know, I guess all the things I've dealt with in the past is that everybody's never heard from y'all or whatever, so I really appreciate this more than anything. But I got a couple of questions, if you don't mind. What happened to it, the plastic company? That we, when we first came on the council, we approved a Texas grant thing for that company that was going to come out there? What happened to that company?
It's still in play. They're out there, as you're probably aware, and they're still doing business, but first off, the deal was, we were going to try to work out a lease for them with the owners until we could get the funding for the capital fund. Well, the owners didn't like the lease that I set down. I said, well, I just was trying to help you get started, you do your own. So they got together, and their negotiations took about four months. Uh, they finally have a lease, they've done some changes to the building, they're in it, but now they're changing a little bit of what they want to do, and, uh, I, I believe that we're going to end up doing that deal, but we're waiting on them.
So the grant's doing what?
Oh, yeah.
On your, on your new website?
Yes, sir.
You know how many web, you know how many hits you get on that thing? I mean, it's trackable, do you know?
Yes, yes, I got, I have that information. Not a lot. They give you your little graph and the numbers, but I, I don't want to shoot from the hip, I can't remember. But it started out pretty good, I don't know who all was looking at it, but then interest dropped off. But you never know. If you're out there and you're in the right search engines, you're probably going to catch somebody.
The, I know that you've sent out a letter?
Yes, sir.
To all the realtors and all that, to get some, add additional property, because there really hadn't been any additional properties put on there from when you first put it on there? Have you got any kind of responsibility of the realtors out there to come in there?
No, I just put a new one on yesterday, I think it was yesterday, but it didn't come out right, and I've got to call them, but, uh, it's for the NOV property. That's the only new property I'm aware of.
Okay. And then the only, the last thing I was going to ask you about, there, and as a realtor, you know about this, I know that people can go out there and do searches. There's, there's an application that Weatherford uses, that you can go out there and put on your website, that if I'm interested in what else is out there in the property land, if I come to your site and I put in my, my, my criteria that I want, it brings up the properties. And I've gone out there, and there's several properties out here. Have you ever thought about putting that on your website?
There are industrial properties out here?
Mm-hmm.
No, I, I wasn't aware of that. I would like to be aware of that, because it's.
But do you know, you know the application I'm talking about?
No.
Okay, I'd be glad to show it to you. So they can go out there and put their criteria in there and bring up the other properties out there. There's industrial, and then there's the other, other side, which I know you and I are not involved with. But putting that out there, people can also do the searches without bringing in the other realtors maybe, that you have on your website, that could bring it straight to you then.
Yeah, we don't care.
But I'd be glad to show it to you, show it to you.
Yeah.
But I just appreciate, I appreciate your openness, I really do.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Oh, no, no, you don't get off that easy, Mr. Butcher. One of the things that we did bring up during the budget process was for you to be gone in Mineral Wells more frequently with recruitment, and maybe trying to set up some kind of a different compensation system with a long-term goal to be, to move the Industrial Foundation off the books, but you to be able to be self-funded off of commissions. Have you and Mr. Ball been able to make any progress on that up to this time?
We, we looked initially at the, at the suggested model, and it wouldn't fly, and we haven't been past there. Uh, the one thing I would, would address, and I have no problem with that, it would be a fair enough way to do it, that's cool. But, uh, right now, I'm one of the few staff people for the city, or the county, or anybody else, that makes money for you already with the new taxes, which we show at the end of every year.
I guess, I, you know, my thing is, like you said, the hits have dropped off. I'm just, my concern, and I've shared this with you before, is that passive business is not going to be the long-term health for you or the city, that I believe, you know, our strength is to have you out there trying to actively recruit industry to come and look here.
One thing I would share is, there's a lot happening in the AUS, the unmanned aviation systems, and Mineral Wells is about to drop right in the middle of that. There's a lot going on. We, we have, it's not me, because I'm not the one most knowledgeable on that, but we've got two people going to, I think we lost them shortly, there's going to be an AUS rodeo out.
Yeah, I was going to say, there's going to be an ASU rodeo out in San Antonio.
And when you, when you get all the scoop on that, you won't believe it is amazing, and it's, it will cause, cause us more attention. And through that attention, hopefully, we can grab some companies that want to be, where they can have a three thirty-three exemption, where they can fly, and they can do all these things, which we will have.
And we've also, between groups, talked about getting together, find someone to help us do a COA. And once we have a COA on a platform, then anybody that wants to come in to test their platform, we can modify that COA for that. And a lot of people know this, but over the last forty years, thirty years, there's been a lot of testing platforms out here. And we're, we're out in the industry, all we've got to do is make it available to, to come back. And I also say that, Mr. Butcher and the staff, and sometimes we may have talked to other companies that are interested, but until they get to the point where, where I run out these ammunition companies, you just don't mention them, but.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else?
Well, only one last thing I'll say, and I'll talk to you later about it. I don't know, Lance, do you know there was two pages on our website for the Industrial Foundation? The old page looks like it's still out there. So I just thought you might look it up.
That, that.
Yeah.
Get rid of that stuff.
Yeah. Appreciate it, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Butcher.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just make a comment too. One of the things that Steve mentioned, and this is going to be very critical going forward for this community, and, and I've not, uh, discussed this with these gentlemen previous to this evening, about making a comment about it, but one of the real handicaps that we're operating under at the present time. One, one of the real handicaps that we're operating under at the present time is the fact that we do not have any property available, either existing facilities and/or a new industrial park. Steve did make mention of that. But where that comes in extremely, to be very important in this whole process is, most of the time, or many of the time, we get, we get information about a, a prospect, particularly this is the way it works out of the governor's office, uh, of economic development, that they will give us thirty, forty-five days to respond to an RFP. And that RFP will have all the various criteria for whoever this particular prospect may be. Typically the ones that are coming to the governor's office are rather large, pretty significant, uh, but we like to respond to all of those, some of which we probably are competitive for and some when frankly we may not be. But we respond to all of those. The problem that we have is, is that we have nothing to show them. Uh, I say we have nothing to show them. We don't have available land. If someone calls Steve and says, here's what I need, I need fifteen acres, here are the criteria that need to be met. Right now, Steve has to hustle and find those properties. Uh, it, it's going to be very important for us going forward to develop some type of funding to underwrite the purchase and development of an industrial park for this community, so that we can be nimble enough to respond to these prospects as they approach us. Right now, it's a very difficult thing to do, because we do not have anything that is readily available, and then that's when Steve has to go out and just start searching for properties. And then that's a very difficult thing to do, particularly, uh, with a lot of these prospects, you have one shot at them. You know, they'll call you, they want to come out and see what you have next week. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, and that, that's a severe handicap that we currently are operating on. It wasn't that late ten years ago, because most of you will remember that the newer industrial park had two buildings in it. And that's not the way it is now, it's built out, so that's something that's going to be very critical for us going forward. And this community is going to need to find a way to develop, to acquire and develop a hundred to two hundred acres of property, preferably in Powell Penno County, that's another issue that we need to keep in mind. Needed, preferably it will be in Powell Penno County, that we can use to market as an industrial park. Very, very important to this whole process, and right now, we are laboring under a severe handicap, or industrial foundations.
Lance, excuse me.
Yeah.
If I could add one thing that I forgot to mention, that you brought up. We probably, I probably get six to eight, maybe more than that, uh, flyers from the governor's office every week. Uh, now, a lot of them, they are very specific, and if you can't meet their criteria, they don't want you to respond. But we send out an awful lot of them too, digitally, thank goodness. Uh, and that's another thing that we are working on, that, as he points out, it's sometimes difficult if you don't have the, the land to put them in, or a building. Thank you.
Anything else? Then we should move on to item number five on page seventeen, that's consider a war bid to Musco Sports Lighting LLC in the amount of one hundred forty-one thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars for the place from the ball field lighting at Evans Field.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members, during one of our spring wind events this past spring, uh, we suffered severe damage to the light poles at Evans Field at West City Park. Uh, as part of our insurance settlement, uh, we have, uh, our, the adjustment for those damages, uh, is roughly ninety-five thousand dollars, which we will, uh, receive in proceeds, uh, to repair that damage. Unfortunately, uh, Evans Field, the lighting system was rather marginal at best, it doesn't meet Little League specifications as far as the height of the poles. Presently, the, uh, poles, or before they were knocked down and damaged, are roughly fifty-five feet high on average. Little League standards require sixty feet for infield, seventy feet for outfield. As a result of that, there are certain levels of Little League All-Star competition and tournaments that can't be sponsored here, because our fields do not meet standard. That having been said, uh, the lighting at Evans Field was rather marginal at best, even prior to, uh, the damage that was sustained there at the field. As a result of this, we've been in discussions with Mineral Wells Little League with the possibility of upgrading the lighting there at Evans Field to metal standards and improve light fixture. Presently, the lighting, uh, on Evans Field is, uh, one thousand watt fixtures. Uh, it is, uh, recommended that we go to metal poles, metal standards, with fifteen hundred watt, uh, fixtures, which will radically improve the lighting, uh, on the field as well. As a result of our discussions, the Little League has agreed to commit thirty-six thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars toward a lighting upgrade to add their, uh, commitment to the ninety-five thousand dollars, uh, that we will receive in insurance proceeds. This puts us about ten thousand dollars shy of being able to do the entire project. And we would recommend that we, uh, approve an additional ten thousand dollars beyond the insurance proceeds to go to this project. We do have ten thousand dollars that would be available in the Parks and Rec Department budget. Uh, we originally, uh, this budget year, uh, had budgeted fifty thousand dollars to, uh, repair the heating, uh, units at the city gym. That was done for about twenty-three thousand dollars, so we have a savings of about twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, already embedded in the, uh, Parks and Recreation budget. So as a result of that, we would recommend that the city partner with our Little League to improve and upgrade the lighting at Evans Field. Uh, the bid that we received is from Musco, they are a part of the Buy Board, which is a state-approved buying or purchasing cooperative. So we don't have to go out for additional bids. And what we typically find is, is that anything that is on the Buy Board or HDAC, which is another purchasing cooperative approved by the state, typically are, are far, uh, more attractive than bids that we would just receive if we were to go out for quotes. Uh, we have dealt with Musco in the past, they're very reputable, we've had a good history with them. And we haven't done any projects with them, but they've been out here and consulted with us on a number of occasions on some of our lighting projects, and they're very, very helpful, very cooperative. As a result of that, we would, uh, recommend that the council award the bid, uh, for ball field lighting at Evans Field to Musco Sports Lighting, uh, in the amount of one hundred forty-one thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars. Uh, that would replace all of the lighting at the field, and that would resolve that issue for probably the next fifteen, twenty years. And it'll certainly give a good ball-playing experience for our young people at Evans Field. And so we would make that recommendation to award the bid as presented.
Any questions, comments? If I remember correctly, part of the fencing and maybe the backstop got damaged for that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, part of the backstop did.
Is that covered also?
Yeah.
I want you to talk.
Yeah, well, one of the poles.
Pick up, y'all.
Broken and came down on part of the backstop, yes.
That's going to be covered for something different.
Yeah, we'll repair that as well.
Okay, alright.
Does, does the proposal that's laid out here include the ten thousand dollars from the city?
Yes, yes, the ninety-five thousand dollars, the thirty-two, thirty-six thousand dollars plus the ten thousand covers the one forty-one. In other words, without the ten thousand dollar additional expenditure from the city, we are shy of having the money available to award the bid to completely relight the field.
So, what's the pleasure, council?
I'll make a motion that we approve the award of bid to Musco Sports Lighting LLC in the amount of one thousand, one hundred forty-one thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars for replacement of ball field lighting at Evans Field.
So, second to award the bid to Musco Sports Lighting, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes seven zero. Okay, number six, page twenty-one, consider a policy for carrying handguns in city government meetings. Don't leave me hanging on this.
Well, uh, yes, Mr. Mayor and council members, as you're aware, as of January the first, we've seen some changes, uh, that have been instituted by state statute with respect, uh, to open carry. What you have in your packet, uh, is a letter of opinion from the city attorney with respect to, uh, what actions the city may or may not take in that regard. Uh, one of the things that is discussed in that opinion are court facilities, and, uh, we have already, uh, put up signage to prohibit, because the statute just prohibits weapons in court rooms and court facilities. Uh, so over in the city hall, we've already posted, uh, the necessary signage, although it's kind of questionable even if we need to post that signage, but we have for open carry and for concealed handguns in our office that handles the municipal court, uh, uh, day-to-day operations. The way that we are handling that in this facility here is that this room is protected under that prohibition only during those periods when court is in session. Uh, so the entire building is not covered under that prohibition, even when the court is being held here. And only during those times that the court is actively in session is that prohibition in place. Otherwise, all city facilities effectively are open, are, uh, are, it is permissible, uh, for open and, and carry and/or concealed and then carry. Uh, the issue that is at hand for the council to make a determination with is that you do have the opportunity to set a policy on, uh, carrying handguns during government meetings. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, the city attorneys identify government meetings as those that are, uh, addressed under the Open Meetings Act, which would be, uh, this body, Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, Board of Adjustment, I believe would be the only, uh, groups, boards or commissions that follow under that same prohibition.
Library Board?
Uh, we don't, we don't believe that they follow under the Open Meetings Act.
They're an advisory board.
Right. Yeah, they, they, they don't take any, any, uh, statutory action or legally binding recommendations, if you will. Nor does the airport board, uh, or any other boards or commissions. So what you would be discussing this evening would be council meetings, Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, and Board of Adjustment meetings, unless.
I think, yeah, I think we have two basic issues, is what to decide to do during open meetings, and further to clarify that this is just a courtroom while the court is in session. The statute is silent on multi-use facilities, but this building, this room here is used for all kinds of different functions, with the city manager visiting with staff, to various times when people can legally, uh, carry a concealed handgun in here, or open carry. Uh, but you have to be careful and not post signage that prohibits that full-time, because the attorney general can come sue you, you'll let the fines upon you for, for having improper signage prohibiting carrying of weapons where they're otherwise authorized. So, my reckon, that recommendation would be, with respect to the, uh, court, is just for the council to adopt in its resolution, uh, that this is only a municipal court while the court is in session. Not all day, every day, which would completely, I think, defeat the purpose of, uh, open and concealed carry of handguns. Uh, the legislature has made it clear they want people to have the right to carry those, except under certain prescribed situations. So, I think that's a relatively easy fix. The next issue is whether, what your position is with respect to either open or concealed, or neither, uh, carry of, of weapons, of handguns during open meetings. And I don't know how, if you feel about that, but, uh, that's within your discretion. It's, it's, it's illegal to do it, but you have a defense if you don't post, post a signage. And so what we'd have to do is post a signage, which has already been procured, uh, but not necessarily. We have to use it unless the council expresses its wishes on how to handle it.
Well, I think, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of council, uh, I would ask, A, that we address the two issues separately.
Okay.
My first issue being, uh, the designation of court when in session as a court and only when it's in session, that this facility be designated that, uh, out of, out of respect to whatever, whomever the judge may be, because we don't know till what will happen with the elections and all that, so, uh, and that that already kind of is a policy that's in place. And, and if we just reaffirm that policy that's already in place, that would be not meaningful.
But isn't the court already, uh, under that restriction, because when you come into the court, they already have the signs posted?
Well, it's already, it's already the law, it's on the books, that it's illegal, but to, for the benefit of those that carry weapons, uh, this is not to blindside them, and just to let them know, which they should know, is that court is in session. So that if they carry a weapon in there and not receiving that sign, uh, the police chief and his people can enforce the law.
And the thing I would say, this is a multi-use facility that, when the court is in session.
Yes, it makes it, just because it's used for a municipal court one time, uh, two, two days a week, it's not a municipal court for all purposes. So we have to define when it is a governmental municipal court.
Otherwise, potentially.
Somebody can walk in here.
You can walk in, be talking to the city manager, have to use the restroom, have to run out to your vehicle, take your ve- weapon off, put it in your vehicle, then go use the restroom.
Right.
If we didn't designate and limit the times for this physical space.
Precisely.
So.
So, do, do we all agree that we need to instruct, uh, staff to go ahead and put together the, a resolution?
Yes, we'll put it together in a resolution form, and we'll, we'll couple that with whatever the council decides, you know, in the other matter.
Yeah, let's talk about open meetings, council, uh, planning, zoning, and Board of Adjustments. Do we? I'm open. What's, what's your feeling on that?
Yes, you know, part, part of me would want to ask, you know, does planning and zoning and, and Board of Adjustments have any concern? Uh, you know, if someone comes in, either concealed carry or open carry? You know, that would be one, one question I would have, because if, if they don't really have an opinion on it. You know, but the other, the other part of it, and I guess this is, I guess this is a Second Amendment thing for me, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed.
Okay, let, let's ask.
Of course, being as concerned, yeah, I would like, or to me, that they can, can uproot it. Well, let's just say I, I'm against it.
Okay.
For safety's sake.
For those of you all who may not be aware, Mr. Ball is the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
When I, when I came on the council, one of the things I asked for, and I appreciate Lieutenant Ellis being here, I asked that we have an extra officer in the, in the courtroom, just because when the chief is busy, just because I want an extra police officer. I know there's other police officers in here. I'm also, I'm, I'm on this, I, I've had a hard time dealing with this, dealing with the open carry. But the concealed weapon, I have no problem with, because I feel that, you know, this is, this is the hard part, you know? You got the signs out there, a sign's not going to stop anybody that wants to do whatever they want to do, in my opinion. It's the same thing that the hospital board went through. When the hospital put their signs out there, there was a big backlash about that, and people wanted to bring their guns out there, and he put the signs up and he said, no, no more. But I'm, I'm in favor of the, uh, option number two, allowing concealed weapons in, uh, in open meetings.
So you would be in favor of them drafting a resolution for signage for thirty oh seven, but not thirty oh six?
Thirty oh six is a nine.
Thirty oh s, yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
Seal just not open?
Thirty, thirty, I, I, I'm going back and forth on the oh seven, you know? Walking in with, with, with the open, you know, I, I, I accept the law, I like the law. But kind of in court meetings, I, or open meetings, concealed weapon, I feel that people that carry their concealed weapon are trained, law-abiding citizens, and they have the right to protect themselves, in my opinion. But it's concealed, and, and I'm not going to have somebody out there with an open gun and somebody else reach over there and say, I know he's got a gun, I'll grab that gun. I'm not, I'm ready for the signage of oh seven.
Yeah.
And concealed is okay with me. Did I say that right?
If, yeah, if, if, yes, if you're wanting to limit.
Concealed.
No open carry, then we would put thirty oh seven signage on it. But not thirty oh six.
Right. That's my opinion.
But if we apply that here, then it would also apply to planning and zoning, we have someone who feels uncomfortable with that. And you don't have police officers in your meetings, so you have no protection. We're a little different here, we always have, um, law enforcement here, while these folks don't, so I think we need to take that into consideration.
That's kind of why the Second Amendment is there, so that government is always reminded by the citizenry that we serve the people. That's kind of why the Second Amendment is there, so that government is always reminded by the citizenry that we serve the people. And if government won't serve it, then like the Declaration of Independence said, people have the right by whatever means necessary to overthrow those governments. For me, it's a, it's a little bit of a constitutional issue of, you know, Second Amendment is kind of clear, right? The people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed.
And the other thing is that you mentioned the airport. Isn't the airport against, it's against state law to carry any kind of weaponry into the law? Airport, isn't it?
Only in secured areas.
Only in secure, I.
That's my understanding, yes.
Because I thought, I thought, I thought I was reading in that thing that you sent us the airport, you can't really go into an airport, but it's a secure area, it's okay.
Yeah, there, there's been, there've been a series of emails going back and forth, uh, amongst some of the, uh, general aviation airport managers, of which obviously we have a general aviation airport. And their, their basic understanding as included in these emails is, is that in secure areas, there's no question, in unsecured areas, not.
And we, we don't have any secure areas, after all?
No, not really.
So how much of a burden would it be to provide an officer for planning and zoning? I'm, I'm just saying, we can sit here and feel pretty confident we're protected because we have law enforcement where these other folks don't. So I, I struggle with saying yes when we've just had someone speak up to say they didn't feel comfortable with that.
Where did you, where do you stand on the signage? Do you, you, are you, are you, both of them?
I would happily compromise on thirty out seven. I'm, I'm not a fan of thirty out six because your, your concealed carry holders, they have gone through their background checks. They have certified that they can hit a target at a reasonable distance, you know? And I know some of the people on, on planning and zoning that they have concealed carries.
Right, okay, I, I just want to know.
And I think for them to, you know, be coming in from somewhere and come into planning and zoning, you know, they're against the law, even though they're legal concealed carry people. Like I say, I'll meet you, I'll meet you halfway and I'll compromise quick and easy on thirty out seven.
Okay.
And any more of the open carry has the same training as the concealed did.
I understand that, but it's the perception.
Oh, and I agree. I mean, it scares some people to see anyone walk around with an open carry. But to this day, I, I still haven't seen a single person open carrying in, in Walmart or Sutherland or any of the places I've been. It's not, it's not very prevalent here at the moment.
I saw Walmart open carrying a dog.
See that a lot.
Okay.
I'll say two.
I support option one for the same reasons that Councilor Reagan expressed.
I'm, I'm just going to say, I've been at some meetings that I hope that nobody had a gun in. But the rea- the reality is that they want to bring one, they're going to bring one. The protection of our boards and our council is we, we can make a attempt to do it, but ultimately it's not going to be complete. But didn't, didn't Weatherford just do something?
I don't know.
Thought I saw.
Not sure.
They, I think they went through that big procedure about other offices and I wasn't sure if, if they, you talking about the Star Telegram article?
Yeah.
Yeah, they listed all their places there. I think they just confirmed what government courts were, is what I think they tried to do there.
Well, City for Worth, there was a recent article and it was like yea long of identifying every location where they had some type of court presence. Of course, they have annexes and that's, that's a much more involved process.
So, any other discussion or do we want to have a motion to?
I, I would make a motion that we direct, uh, city staff to prepare a resolution, uh, to set thirty out seven signage, uh, concerning, uh, open meetings, uh, to restrict the open carry of firearms, of handguns.
I'll say.
And George, you agree that that's, uh, permissible?
Sure.
Okay. Could move second, second to, uh, ask city staff to perform thirty out seven signage for open meetings, uh, for the city. Could move second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And do you want to go ahead and vote on the, okay.
Are you opposed now, Wes?
Wasn't this still only open carry or, excuse me, concealed carry?
Yes.
That, that would allow only concealed carry?
No, I, I believe there should be open.
You believe open carry too?
Need another show of hands on that.
So it's two no's and, uh, three, three no's and four.
Four three.
You need a vote on the municipal court, George?
Yes. I make a motion that we designate the council chamber space as the municipal court during the times when court is declared in session.
I'll say.
Would I decide to, uh, designate, uh, council chambers as a municipal court? Municipal court area during the court. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposition? So it passes seven zero. Go to the next step. I have the staff, exit staff.
I understand.
Out of number seven, page twenty-four, conduct the public hearing and consider renewal of our ordinance to continue current few hours for minor than the city of Mineral West. That's the shortest one you've got. I open the public hearing to six fifty-six.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Uh, every three years, the Texas statute declares that a council, a governing body must consider its juvenile curfew ordinance if it's in effect and the effects it's had on our community, our constituents and et cetera. So the purpose of this item tonight is to bring you up to speed on where we are. The current ordinance is set to expire on midnight on February the second, uh, next month. And so it's time to consider and deliberate whether you want to continue that. Uh, for the benefit of those who don't know, we do have a juvenile curfew ordinance that applies to the incorporated city limits of our town. Uh, the times for these juveniles under seventeen is from eleven P M. to six A M., um, Sunday through Thursday, just as a point of reference. Then midnight to six A M. on Fridays and Saturdays. There are some exceptions accompanied with a guardian, uh, but there are also some penalties for those that facilitate or otherwise ignore, including those guardians or shop keeps who allow juveniles to remain after these hours. And those are all provisions in our ordinance and I can go into that further if you want. Uh, with this item, there's a letter that you're required to receive from me on page twenty-five. Uh, just the police department's position remains, uh, consistent that this is an effective tool. Um, it's one of the many tools that, that we can use to help curb crime and especially deter our young ones from, you know, nothing good happens after dark. Um, and then on page twenty-six is just a summary, statistical summary of the number of citations and arrests for the juveniles that applies to this ordinance or the juvenile arrests or all juvenile crimes. And then lastly, on page twenty-seven is the renewal of the ordinance should you choose to go in that direction. Do you see that?
I know the numbers say they are doing more citations, but, uh, the past year than you did the previous year. Do you see that as a trend that's happening?
It could be. I, I really think going back a little further even before twenty fourteen, I only got here in twenty twelve, but you remember that the legislature had entertained some changes to juvenile citations and enforcement? And it just applied to schools, school properties, school vehicles, et cetera, and a lot. I'm not saying a hundred percent that that's attributable to that, but we did have to do a lot of re-education of some of our staff. Plus, we had a pretty good turnover, if you recall, during that same period, so combination of factors.
I, I just noticed kids have a lot more than they used to be.
Yeah, there, there are, um, and, and that's where the responsible parenting and, and, you know, there's a lot of different strategies that we need to entertain this year going forward to, well, we'll wait till the next council meeting, we'll talk about that, so. Yes, sir.
I looked at the numbers that you got on page twenty-six, that you have on page twenty-six. I try and work my grammar once in a while. That tells you we have more arrests, but do you have a correlation from preceding three-year period that shows that this actually brought down juvenile crime?
I don't. I can probably get that together. Um, now, it's not going to be apples to apples in that juvenile laws have changed. We also changed record management systems. That's not an excuse, but I can give you some semblance of, uh, representative, you know, what the changes are, the impacts and et cetera.
But if I remember correctly, the first three years that we did it the first time, uh, the criminal juvenile crime went down significantly.
This council or whoever was on here, maybe none of us were born, but this started in nineteen ninety-six. This is the first time the Mineral West City Council enacted a juvenile curfew. Records back that far, I don't know. These records come from the court, municipal court. So this is a class C misdemeanor related things, not necessarily the other juvenile related crimes. But that's kind of the impetus behind this law, is that maybe if we can, you know, interdict and interact sooner, uh, maybe we deter them from going on to. Yes, sir. At the county? Uh, so, uh, Mr. Moran is our finance director. He also serves as our court administrator. And he pointed out that if you'll recall back to the budget, we transferred the function of the juvenile case manager over to the county in partnership. And so a lot of this is, is being transferred over there and, and not necessarily handled within our municipal court. So again, an apples-to-apples fair comparison, I, I don't want to skew something that, that's not there, but also don't want to minimize something that, yes, in our opinion, this is an effective tool, it has a tremendous impact and it gives your Mineral West police officers just another angle of attack to try to do something about crime in our town. A lot of the things that you've expressed may or may not be juvenile related, but till we catch them, we kind of don't know. But there are, like Jimmy pointed, there, there's a lot of kids out and the parents need to step up, but we can hold them accountable too.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just kind of give the benefit of a little historical perspective. Shortly or for a short period of time, maybe a few years, after this curfew was instituted, the, the number of encounters, incidents and arrests was higher than it has been over the last several years. So I think that it's kind of, it's had at least some deterrent effect, uh, at least beyond a period of time when we did not have this in place. So I think we can at least make that, uh, comparison from a historical perspective. Uh, the other side of the, I see here, what, what I'm saying here is, is that the, the first few years that this was in place, we had more contacts and more arrests than we have had over the last several years, which to me, I'm not a law enforcement professional. But I think, I think what we've seen is the communities have become accustomed to the fact that we do have this curfew in place. And I think it has had a deterrent effect just from that standpoint. We've just had a, a, a smaller incidence of these kinds of arrests. The other thing is, is that over time, this has been all over the board as far as the number of arrests that you have from one year to the next. It's also very cyclical based on the season of the year. I think you would agree with that, Chief. In the summertime, we have more of an issue with children being out, uh, schools not in session, that sort of thing. So I think it's somewhat difficult to gauge the success or lack of success of this, of this ordinance simply without looking at, at numbers from two years ago, three years ago versus what we have today. Because there's been a wide variance in the, in the number of arrests, the number of contacts over the years. And actually, what we're seeing now is we're seeing less of that than we did before this entire regimen was, was put in place. And I think as the chief said, this does give our officers an opportunity to make contacts that otherwise they may not be able to make and certainly draw the parents into the mix, uh, if their child is violating the curfew. So I, I think we've had good success with it over time. It's just kind of difficult from one period of time to the next to say, well, we had more arrests this quarter, more arrests two years ago than we do now. Uh, are, are we not enforcing it? Are we not really placing the emphasis on it? Uh, it just, it just seems to vary from time to time. But it does seem to have had a, a good deterrent impact over an extended period of time.
You do, you do know that the number of arrests is up fifty percent from last year and the year before it was basically the same. But from that three-year period, you're looking at overall twenty-five percent and over two-hundred percent from the previous year.
Right.
So, so statistically, what you've said done fly, Lance.
Now, what I'm saying is from one year to the next, you can't necessarily say that, that the, the ordinance is being effective simply because you have more arrests. You might think that's the case, but oftentimes we have contacts of our officers out in, in, in the public with these children and they don't arrest them. So, so that does indicate that our officers are having contacts, but there are a lot of those that don't end up being arrests either. So, so I think it has certainly a deterrent impact, but it could well be next year, those numbers are, are reversed or flip-flop. So a lot of, a lot of it's very dependent on, on, you know, what's occurring out in the community at that particular time. And over a period of time, we've seen wide variations in the number of arrests from one year to the next. Next year, it could be that our numbers go down. We, we just don't know. But we think on the whole, this has been a practical tool that the police department has and it's been very successful.
So the simple thing is this, this, this allows your officers an, an easy tool to make contacts with juveniles.
It's not an easy tool, but and just to reiterate.
It makes it easier for them.
It gives them a tool at their disposal to otherwise address, um, unregulated behavior because, you know, parents these days especially don't necessarily take care of their kids or make sure they're in bed, whatever. Uh, so as a community and from a community perspective, community caretaking function that we all have, this is one of those caretaking measures. Um, something else, just to, um, kind of expand on what Lance is talking about. Every one of these arrests and or citations doesn't mean that that was our first and only option. My position since I've got here has and remains that we try to educate first. So sometimes it's a good tool to interact with those parents who don't realize there are ramifications, repercussions for their kids being out. If that doesn't work and, you know, we, we go to plan B and we move to enforcement if that's the most appropriate remedy. But this is a tool, it's not the only tool, it's not a first resort or a last resort. It's just a myriad of, uh, tools in our toolkit that we can employ with your blessing in renewing this ordinance.
One thing that John just made mention of is that over the last year or two, we have had a significant number of these incidents with juveniles from other communities that we have caught in the Baker Hotel. And so even that drives these statistics as well, which in, you know, kind of comes in waves as well. So again, it's kind of hard to really, really say if the numbers are up from one year to the next that it's more effective this year than it was last year. It is a good tool, it does have a deterrent effect. It's a little difficult to just say from one year to the next that this is, you know, that we're having better results or it's having a greater impact this year than it is last year. Because I know that, uh, Chief, if I'm wrong, that we've had several groups of young people from out of town over this past twelve to eighteen months that we've caught in the Baker Hotel and they've been cited for a variety of things. Now, they're not even, you know, in this community yet, they're subject to the curfew.
One thing I heard you say, Chief, is that because of the police force and a lot of the, the conflicts people have with the police force, I do appreciate the officers speaking to the kids first. You know, when I was growing up, we used to wander the street, but then, then again, we used to have our keys in our car and all this stuff. But I appreciate you saying that, you know, you know, you're not hardcore about this. Go out there and talk to the kids, talk to the parents, and after two or three times, it's time to make it. I don't know what number of times, I'm just saying, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying do it after the tip time. I'm just saying, you know, I appreciate the education at first, kids go home, do some, this is why we do it and whatever, but I appreciate that. So we have a friendly police force.
But Mr. Reagan, I will get you those statistics as far back as possible. Again, most of this precedes my time here, so the extent of the records, I don't know. I'm sure Juanita may have something in the council. I'm, I'm assuming they probably produced this, but that's an assumption. But whatever we have, I'll get it to you and we'll talk about it and other matters next time anyways.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Is anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this ordinance?
I think it's a wonderful idea. I've had, we've had, we've never had crime.
Come on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Give your name and address.
Jenny Milliken, six oh five, ninety-three nine. I think it's a wonderful idea. We've had, we've never really hadn't had any problems in our neighborhood, but just recently, it's just been a rash of people just walking down the street. We had somebody knock on our window New Year's Eve. And then all the lights... I mean, I just, I think the kids are out of control. I think that is a good option to just reel them in and take them home and let their parents handle them if they have to.
Thank you. Anybody else? I propose a public hearing at seven-ten. Once the pleasure of the council approves of approving the ordinance to continue the curfew hours for my city of Mineral Wells. Ordinances, you got to read.
An ordinance continuing to enforce and affect the curfew ordinance of City of Mineral Wells, Texas, codified in Chapter six, six, section seventy-six through eighty of the Code of Ordinances of City of Mineral Wells for the period from February second, twenty sixteen, to February second, twenty nineteen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that so?
Yes.
Have you moved the segment to approve the ordinance? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes seven-zero. Item number eight, page twenty-nine, Consider Resolution Authorizing Execution of Interlocal Agreement between the City of Mineral Wells and Palatino County for Joint Funding and Operation of Emergency Operations Center.
Mr. Mayor and council, the community as a whole, the city and the counties, indeed, an ELC Emergency Operations Center. If you're not familiar what that is, it goes along with your emergency operation plan that's listed with Tedom and Austin. And it's a facility that needs to be able to operate efficiently on its own with a generator, internet, televisions, phones, backup, redundant type situations. It's something we're not going to use on a very often basis, hopefully. And sometimes we will use it for some other things, to observe the weather and maybe prepare for an event, a winter event, something of that nature. Because of the size of our county and our city, we don't really need one in the city and in the county specifically for the amount of money they cost. And we're wanting to share one with the county, and it's going to be at the Goodyear Purdue Building, what we're planning right now. In the city, it's a good location for the county, even though we're on the east side, because we have hotels available. We have some lumber yards, and we have fuel and things like that. We could have an incident, the county could have an incident over on the west side of the county, and we'd still operate this as an ELC. An ELC is pretty much a resource center in that we would go there, you, Mr. Mayor, would have a seat, and to be advised and ask questions and help input, city manager, city attorney. The finance man would be there, because sometimes we have things we have to pay for that are out of the ordinary, and we need him to help us keep track of that so we can recoup our money from FEMA that becomes a disaster. In the event that it does get to be a very, very large-scale, long-term process, we might actually let that ELC be operated by the state or even by the feds. They would come in at that level and could use it then. And it's just a good agreement for us to enter into.
Why don't we have the tornado here? The night we had all these...
That was a unique situation.
Yeah, but we learned a lot from that.
Oh, we did. We did. And our basic plan is fairly new. It needs some work. We're still, the annexes are still being prepared for some things. It's just a work in progress. It's always going to be a work in progress, but this is a good start for it.
Yeah, we need to work together.
Sure we do.
Yes, sir.
We had the wildfires. We had the county over there. We had the city here. Then we had the feds out at the base. Put everybody together as a good place.
Well, currently, you know, I'm going to cog some and learn some things about emergency management that I didn't know, trying to get our name out there a little bit. Been down to Granbury, their ELC, talked with their emergency management person. When the storm come up in Dallas over there, I was in contact with them. I was actually, the day it snowed, supposed to go to, what's the heights? South Dallas to their ELC and help them. And in turn, when we do things like that for them, they'll come do things for us. And the size we are here, I'm pretty much the second emergency management person in the county right now, in which it's noted at the county. If Mr. Jordan's not in, I'm their guy. And if, you know, we have people here, he'll come help us, and we're going to help them. It's just the only way we can work in this small environment and then make a go of it. There's no reason we might not use each other, help each other.
Chief, it's all the radio towers up now?
Sir?
I was under the understanding that out of the county, they had put up seven or five new radio towers? Do you know if they're all up and operational?
Yes, sir, they are. They are. Yes, sir.
Chief?
Sir?
I believe the county just recently approved a purchase of the formal Berg's Celebration Center. Is this the junction where we're talking about here, or is this a separate entity from?
That is separate. And I believe the proper terminology for that is a multiple command post. It could probably be used on a small incident as an ELC, which is fine. It's available to us when we need it, as long as it's not a county-wide problem. And the command post, that would be into what happened with the tornado that made it difficult, is that where we tried to run an operation from happened to be in the same place that the storm was. So, we were a little bit close, and everyone was working the parameters a little bit. Normally, you don't talk to your command face-to-face. Your ELC is here, and your command's somewhere else. And the ELC is, if you have people that need places to stay, well, you get on the phone, and you tell command, and then command works to move those people to whatever facility. If you need food for your people, if you need restrooms for your people, your ELC people take care of those. So, that's not, the command works particularly with the incident itself and how to minimize and bring it to a good end.
And additionally, we have a local contact for the Texas Department of Public Safety's emergency response team.
Yes. Yes, we have. Rafael Reyes is our contact with Texas Department, Texas Division of Emergency Management. Of course, under the way it's set up, we have to go through the county. And the county calls the state, the state calls the feds. But it's just a matter of a phone call to Rafael, and the wheels start turning. And it's just, we've learned a lot. We came a long way. We've gone a long way to go, but we're doing better.
You have mixed statements. Anybody else?
Yes, on the payments, the county will be making to maintain the ELC? Will that be a monthly payment, a yearly payment?
What we're actually looking at is, we're buying a generator. That's the main thing we need right now. A generator large enough to sustain the whole building. Of course, there's water there, and there's always bottled water there. We need to probably, we need to have that. We're going to have to be able to run the air conditioning and the heat building. And then we're going to have some phones and some backup phones, so we're going to have some landlines to work with our cell phones, because one or the other will be down, maybe both. In the future, we'd probably like to buy one satellite phone and have it available, because it works anytime. It goes to the satellite. It's not dependent on the towers and the wire system, things like that. We'll need to buy some printers, probably, some things like that. We have a TV. The county already has a few things. We plan on putting that in where we can monitor the weather a little bit closer and keep up with what's going on. The people in the ELC will probably want to see some of the news of what's being reported, kind of see whoever's doing the press releases, will hear what people are saying and know whether it's true or not. And then they need to counter that. So, there's just a whole lot goes into this to set it up. So, to answer your question, what we want to do is build this thing. A little here, a little there, add a few pieces each year. And then we're going to have some expenses with it. Internet, telephone, TV, electricity, things like that. Service the generator. It happens to be, a company needs to come look at it at least once a year and have fuel for it. So, it'll have some operating expenses, but they're not going to be very expensive.
The reason I'm asking about the month-to-month of year is on the agreement, if the county terminates, they won't be entitled, you said, to any reimbursement from the city. But if we terminate, we owe for three thousand dollars a year. As soon as a little block sided, then how does it work?
Well, we're buying a generator, and the price of the generator and the installings and wiring brings thirty-one thousand dollars. And they're going to pay upfront. Or as soon as we get this agreement and the generator gets ordered, then they're going to pay for half of it.
Well, that's great. I mean, I'm perfectly happy with the half, but if we're all paying half each time, and then all of a sudden, they don't owe anything?
It will stay, it will stay here, and then they'll be without their generator.
Okay. Not to be mean, but if they want to make their own ELC somewhere with us...
They may do that.
They still may do that. Okay. It just seems like we're burdening, we're taking much of a lot of the burden while they're, I mean, yes, they're paying for it, but it's not fifty-fifty anymore. I mean, if I'm belonging to that, please tell me. I'm just going to make sure.
I'm not exactly sure how to fix that for it.
I think the concern is that they have no reimbursement if they bail during the first five years, whereas we're stuck with an annual payment to them during the first five years to reimburse them.
Exactly. I just don't want the city to be caught, you know, with all these tons of expenses. I mean, they're small, but they'll add up.
Oh, yeah.
And the counties, they have money, and we have to pay thousands of dollars. They're like, well, here's five hundred dollars this month. I just don't want that to happen.
Well, but that's based on the city terminating the agreement?
No, just on costs. I mean, they haven't fixed costs yet. They said fifty percent of the expenses. And is that going to be fifty expenses for everything? Are they going to keep track of everything via the ELC? They pay fifty percent of everything, or?
Well, we use that facility for our volunteers also. So, we're already, the city's already pays the liquor bill and the water bill and things like that, and maintenance on the building. You know, fix to get a new roof when that happens. So, I don't expect them, we'll ask them to pay for any of that.
No, but...
The ongoing things just dedicated to the ELC, I believe we'll ask them for their fifty percent.
I think to answer your question, Councilwoman, is if you look at the, this is all predicated and based primarily upon the purchase of the generator. If you look at your over-five-hundred list under general fund, and you'll see there toward the end of that first grouping there, generator and then electrical supply. So, you see that the initial expense is right at thirty thousand dollars. So, this is predicated based on the roll-up expense being around forty thousand dollars for all of the initial work to be done, to get the generator in place, to get the installation taken care of. We're going to do the majority of the installation as far as the electrical, the city will in-house. So, really, what this is built around is, is that the county doesn't want to give us eighteen thousand dollars. We set this up here at our location, and then we tell them we don't want to work with them anymore. They want that protection. So, what I think you're really looking at here is, is that their big concern is that they don't want to give us this money, us partner with them, and within some short period of time, tell them we don't want to be a party to this agreement anymore. And their contribution is stranded at that point. They've lost that contribution. So, I think that's really the basis for why they worded it that way. And then they also talk about a true-up of other incidental expenses on a fifty-fifty basis at the end of each year. But that eighteen thousand dollar number, they would like to get that reimbursed if, for some reason, we do all that work, we accept their money, we put all this in place at our facility, and then tell them we no longer want to be a party to the agreement.
Or if you say no, it was completely, they have to buy their own generator.
Yeah, well, if they say...
All the sort of costs is on them.
Yes, if they say, let's say that the council decides not to participate in this agreement, then we have forty thousand dollars in the budget for this year to purchase the generator and to get the ELC set up, additional phone lines, internet. But the county is participating with us, so our share basically is halved. And what they're asking for in this agreement is that they want to participate with us, but they don't want to strand that money. And if we decide unilaterally to terminate the deal a year or two out, they just want that protection that we're in the deal for the foreseeable future if they're going to contribute half the money. That's the basis for it.
Perhaps what lacking in the agreement, not in the parent, was, I just looked at it, we all do, but is that we don't have express language on who keeps the property at the termination of it. I think a simple sentence that says that, in either case, the city retains the property. And so, if they bail, we keep the property. If we bail, we pay them back their pro-rated portion, and we keep the property. So, maybe we could add a sentence.
Yeah, because mathematically, that's, and I understand your point, that's been my concern, is, you know, if we're going to reimburse them their entire cut on this, but who gets the property? Well, if the property still gets split, then no, this is bad deal. And I think that was kind of your, so...
Well, my thinking, which I understand what you're saying now perfectly, is it would be installed over there, so it would be ours. But it would remain here. But I, that's something that needs to be identified.
So, what would that sentence be, Mr. Gallo?
I think you say, in either situation, the city retains ownership of personal property and improvements to the facility.
During?
Yeah. Would that be just after the five years, and then after renewal of contract, the property will?
I think the city's...
No repayment at all? I mean, how do we...
Actually, after five years, it's...
Yeah, it's pro-rated. Yeah.
The agreement's over with.
Thirty-seven hundred dollars for each of the five years. So, it's pro-rated.
I just got one other thing to say, is just because when I was a member of the ELC in Fort Worth, one of the things that we had that was, and I still part of it right now when the weather comes in, I wish you might look at talking to some ham radio people in town, because when we lose all of the communication, we were able to communicate when a lot of other stuff goes down. And then when we're in the ELC over there, we always had a ham station going or ham people available. So, you knew what was going on, and we're always in contact with the weather service. So... Just a thing I wanted to...
The emergency manager coordinators is working on that, and they're even looking at doing a ham class. I don't know what all that...
Well, there's a lot of ham guys around here that'd like to be part of the ELC.
Yeah, and we'd like to, in the future, have some radios, different types of radios. Like I said, I think it needs to be a work in progress on something that we can build.
I was just putting that out there for an idea.
Thank you.
So, would I, could I get a motion to accept the agreement with the change? Okay.
I'm sorry. We did say property and improvements, correct?
Yes. I said all personal property and improvements to the facility.
Okay.
And then we'll also add a sentence that all payments under shall be made with current revenues, which is required for interlocal agreements.
Ready, please. I move to approve the resolution with the changes. I guess I said...
To move, say to approve the agreement with the changes made by the city attorney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Passes seven-zero. Item number nine.
Senator?
Just made a statement. You put your time.